And we're going to get started. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 23rd, 2023 City Council's special meeting. I am Mayor Ross, and tonight's meeting is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology by Zoom, and so the recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So if you want to watch it later, or if you have friends that are missing this wonderful event, then you'll be able to see it later on on our website. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew. Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Christiansen. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Ross.
I am here, and Councilmember Christiansen has requested to be excused. And I'm assuming Mayhew will be here shortly. So do you want to go ahead and excuse? Councilor Johnson?
In case he doesn't show up, move to excuse both Councilmember Christiansen and Councilwoman Mayhew.
Second.
It's moved by Councilor Johnson, second by Councilor Washington, to excuse Councilwoman Christiansen and Councilwoman Mayhew. All as a favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? So motion passes, and they are both excused. Now we move on to our first item of business, and it is to approve the agenda. Councilman may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move. Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, and second by Councilwoman Watten. Any discussion? All as a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? All right, so our agenda has passed. Now, we have a very special person we're honoring tonight that we're going to honor. So we're hosting a reception and honoring our longtime Snoqualmie resident Carol Peterson for over 50 years of service to this community. And Carol has lived in the Snoqualmie Valley for over 60 years and has had a true impact on our city and our community. Carol has devoted countless hours to volunteerism and public service alongside her husband, Charles Peterson. As many of you know, Carol's husband, Charles, is a namesake of our council chambers, and for good reason. He served the city in leadership roles dating back to the 1960s as city council member, planning commissioner, and mayor. He helps to bridge the gap between old and new Snoqualmie, promote a sense of community in our city. Throughout the years, Carol and Charles were always working together to make Snoqualmie a better place. Carol served on the Snoqualmie Parks Board, putting up the classic Snoqualmie signs at the city's entrances. She helped establish the city's first parks. She planted flowers and maintained city landscapes, and helped to coordinate the painting of the old city hall and council mural. She also organized many clubs and events, including children's athletics, campfire groups, and her gardening club. Carol played a vital role in bringing healthcare services to the valley by successfully lobbying Congress in Washington DC for funding for the original Snoqualmie Valley Hospital, built in 1983. Carol helped in the formation of organizations such as Mount Si Senior Center, and volunteered for Children's Services of Snow Valley, which is now in Compass, and is celebrated well over 50 years. Snoqualmie Valley Food Bank, Snoqualmie Valley Shelter, which is now called Reclaim, and many others over the years. Carol has volunteered at her church, Snoqualmie United Methodist, for nearly 60 years, holding every single position at one time or other, besides pastor or choir member. So she's not a singer, I guess. Carol's affinity for public service even influenced her career working as an aide for US Representative Julia Butler Hansen, and then her successor, Don Bonker. Earlier this year, Carol retired from her role as member of the city's Human Services Advisory Committee. Carol served on the committee for several years, helping to advance Snoqualmie's Human Services Program, and represented community voice in the funding of vital services for residents in need. So thank you, Carol, for your service. And I'd like to actually ask if you'd like to say a few words, but also, I hope all of you are admiring this wonderful slideshow Carol provided these pictures, and kind of little history of each one of those. And then we also have wonderful snacks and cake. So feel free to get up and get food as well. So, so Carol.
I do need to use the mic. Maybe not, we'll see.
If you use the mic, then the people, then, yeah, you can swing around that way. That'd be good.
I'd rather turn my back to the board than you folks. You're my friends. I only know one of them anymore. Ryan's a friend, but the rest I don't know. So I can say that. You have to do something good to be my friend, because I got lots of them, and I love them all. Yes, she said a lot about what I've done. I do need to tell you, though, I was thinking about this and thought, when was the first time I decided to organize something? And, you know, we're all born with different talents, and I figured out early on that one of mine was organizing. And I'll tell you, the first one I remember, I was 10 years old. I was in a class of fourth and fifth graders. There were 13 of us, and the teacher in reading classes would take the slowest readers, three or four of them, and the rest of us would hang out. Well, that's a waste of time, so I organized two more reading groups, and I monitored both, the meeting and the fast readers. And the teacher just shook her head, but I kept going, and it lasted for two years. So that was the first one I remember, except organizing my household. I was the third or fourth children, and it needed organizing badly, because the boy got off doing nothing. But once I was done, he had to pull his share. So my mother always remembered that. Let me tell you a little bit about the two of the bigger things that I organized. The hospital we have now is called Snoqualmie Valley Hospital, but it's the second Snoqualmie Valley Hospital. Most of you that's been here a while know about the first one was built on the hill up through 84th on Ethan Wade's 49 acres that he gave to the city, or to the hospital, maintaining the hospital. We could not build on that site, however, without two things. They needed sewer and water. They were not part of the city of Snoqualmie. Snoqualmie city limits only went to the corner, going up through 84th. My husband happened to be mayor at the time, and I happened to be working for Congressman Don Bonker, 3rd district, and I represented King County for him for many years. And what we did was, I went door to door, and none of those people, I think, are still alive. I'd be surprised if they were. Anyway, went door to door and got enough of them to agree to annex to the city. And my husband got the city council to agree and annex that land. The next problem was money. We did not have, we were lacking $10 million, which sounds like peanuts today for a hospital, but it was, this was 1975 approximately. So Don Bonker paid my airfare, and I flew back to Washington DC and went before Congress, had a Representative Foley, who was head of the FDA, and he got me into Congress, and I lobbied all by myself, had no opposition, and had in my pocket a check for $10 million that I flew home with and presented to the board, so they could build the hospital. And then, before it got built, I quit, because they said I could be the secretary to the main person, and I said, "Thank you, I have other fish to fry, other things to organize." Another one we did at that time, which I'm sure lots of you, well, maybe not lots, but some of you attend, is the Mount Si Senior Center. At the time, we did not have really a senior center, and we got the ladies, some of the guys there, too, making pot holders and things that they do, and many of them thought and still believe that that's what built their Mount Si Senior Center. But it did not. Don and I went to work on Congress again, and we got the full money to build the whole thing, land and all. And we dedicated it, and the little old ladies, we really them for selling so many pot holders and candlesticks, or whatever it was that they made. And to this day, when I go there for a luncheon, they say, "Isn't it nice we could make so many pot holders? We built this place?" Many of them still don't know how it came about, but between Don and I, we paid for everything. He was really good with King County. By the way, he just passed away a couple of weeks ago. He was a dear friend of mine, besides my boss. That's two of the bigger things that I've organized. It doesn't always mean money to do it, but it takes, I guess, drive is the word for it. And we, we, when I say "we," I mean my husband and I, because we were a team. He was not only the mayor, he was the head of the local union. So, and I was a representative for Congress, so we pretty much wrapped up. If we wanted to do something, we didn't have to go to anybody, we just did it. And that's how the sign boards came about. If you've driven into town from North Bend lately, you'll see that one sign board is missing the planks. Nobody asked, but I'm assuming they're taking it down, or could be they're just tidying up the boards, which had started to somewhat shatter. But that was the city limits at that time. And the other one at the other end has been taken down because of the fencing and things that have gone up. And that was the city limits heading to Fall City. And we didn't have many, and I just said to my husband, I said, "We need signs," and he said, "Okay." So I went to telephone company and got the poles, and went to a little guy who had his own mail, to mail it for me, and then I went to the, I don't know what his title was, at the high school, to teach me how to route letters. What is it? Shop, probably the shop teacher. Sorry, I don't remember his name, but he came to the house and showed me how to do it. And if you remember, or if the thing goes back, notice particularly, the letters are weird. I was so determined not to just have script, so I've got these square letters. Snoqualmie welcomes you on one side, and the other side, what does it say? Snoqualmie welcomes you? Please come again. And they're weird looking. So if they're really taking it all down, I don't mind. It's been up for over 50 years. And I knew when I built it, I told the mayor that this would last his term, all the way through, whatever, and of course, that ended up being 40 years for him, and it's been 50. Yes. Okay? Oh, they are? Okay. Well, when nobody asked me, I kind of thought that, but I don't want to disturb whatever the city wants to do. Are you changing the shape of the letters? Okay, you'll have something to notice then. Yeah, it's weird, but it was out on my kitchen table, and I had a thought. Some of the brick building, tell me what the honey, the barbecue place name is? Buckshot? I never remember that. That building was the city council, and my husband bought it for a buck. And I'll show you, I have a picture. You can't really see this, but we can pass it around. This is a picture of my husband with mayor. This is Joe Lyons, who was the president of the bank, that originally was a Seattle Bank, Seattle something Bank, and this was one of the heads of the warehouse. And at this time, Chuck held out his hand, and Joe Lyons gave him a buck. He put it in his pocket. When he passed away five years ago, the city had still not paid back the buck. So guess who owns that building? As a surviving widow and the paperwork, I can prove that building is mine. That's a true story. Everything I tell you is going to be a true story. Another one that we have, that I don't, I haven't got a chance to look to see in some of these, but you're all aware of the gazebo, right? Okay, that's called, the first three parks everyone snoqualmie were built by Chuck and me. And we did Riverview Park first, and Chuck Smith, who has a sign there in his honor, willed all of his property to us, and we put it together for Riverview Park. The second one was Sandy Cove Park, and the third was the gazebo. And that gazebo was built by the mayor, asking a job in a meeting, and everybody to go over and pitch in to build it. And that's what we did. He did the roof, and I did some of the other floral things. So that needed something besides the gazebo. So Chuck went to Bellevue and got in touch with Kemper Freeman, if you folks know who that is. He's Mr. Bellevue. Yeah, he's, just moment. And Kemper Freeman was buying new, whatever you call those roofs, for Bellevue Square. So Chuck said, "Can I have them?" And he says, "Guess what they're going to cost? $1." So Chuck held out his hand, and Kemper put a dollar in it, and guess what? I still owe those, too. So if at some point, I really think the city owes me, at least I'll have $2 out there. That was a fun project. When we did that brick building, we wanted to bring it back to its original. Betty Carmichael, who was one of the wives of the councilman, it was all five men, and so I recruited the other four, the park board, except, you know what we were called? The mayor named us. We were the first beautification committee, first one we ever had. And we started out by finding the tin roof that went on top, the ceiling, and we looked all over and found it, and she and I, at our 4'11" and 5'2", on tall ladders, put a lot of it up. But, you know, I was over there lately, and it's not there, and I was so disappointed. I don't know what happened to it. Anyway, we painted and wallpapered the whole thing and opened it as the city council. Again, there was no motions, nobody seconded it, except one of us made it, and the other one seconded it, so that's what we did. Name some of the other things that she's kind of mentioned them, but the behind us, the murals. Who's got that? Julie, can you stand up and show that? Dick Burhans, whom a lot of you probably know the name, passed away recently. Very, very sad. Good, good friend of ours. When Chuck was mayor, he wanted something special for the valley, and he couldn't, he decided to call who was agreeable, and he designed these, and ended up giving Charles the proofs, or whatever you call these. I don't know, architecture. But he, and this is what we went by when we decided, what mostly Dick decided, but he and I got to say, too, what would be good. And if you don't know the history of them, anytime I can tell you. That really is the history of Snoqualmie through Warehouse from way back. Thank you. So that was one of the many things. Let's see. Oh, yes. When I retired at 81, I was going to be stopping this, all this stuff, but it just gets me, I guess, and my garden, some of my garden club gals are here, which is really nice to see them. I started four garden clubs. The earliest was about 1965, which was the time I had two toddlers, and I just decided we needed a garden club, because I was getting tired of doing all the gardening for the city. It wasn't a very big city, but still, I made gardens everywhere. And so the mayor appointed me, like I said, the beautification committee. Catherine, I think, got it a little bit wrong. I never was appointed Park Commission. I had applied, like I'm supposed to, and Larry White Beach, I think is his name, came with me to the rose gardens, and I showed him how it should be pruned, the roses pruned, and taken care of, and fertilized, et cetera, and not put bark on them, because that ties up the nitrogen in the soil. In case some of you want to put bark around flowers, don't do it. I don't care what developers do, they do it for beauty, not for growth. Anyway, we went ahead and, using whoever I could, we formed the first committee, then the second committee, then the third committee, and by then, it'd been, I think, 10 years. And the fourth time I organized it, it took, and the gals are here, and it's a great garden club, and they've been going by the name of Snoqualmie Valley Garden Club, which is what I wanted, because it was supposed to include all the cities, and everybody's from North Bend but me. Snoqualmieite, but I'm still a, I guess, they just said a founder. I like that. I'm the founder of the garden club. And if any of you know my property, four, five city lots down the street that I do, it's all landscaped and guarded, but I have lots of help these days. Let me just mention a couple other things that I don't want you to think I did them alone, because I didn't. The Children's Services originally met in the Methodist Church. Of course, they're now in Compass. And what we did, we had two ladies named Sue Salvage and Nancy Gilderslove, who were the teachers, and we needed three volunteers, and I was the first one, and we had five students. And the one that was allotted to me was six inches taller than me, and outweighed me by at least 20 pounds, and was mostly wheelchair-bound. So that was interesting. At the time, I had Ryan, and I think he was going to kindergarten or something then, but I never was gone when the kids were home from school. Somehow, I managed that with two jobs and career work, that I call it. That was my career work. It just didn't earn anything. In fact, volunteer. What did we write that on, Julie? Anyway, it indicates, when we think of volunteer, we usually think of somebody who did something for a living, continues doing it, but doesn't get paid for it. Isn't that what you say? Volunteer? Well, that's not, I lost the page where it says it. Anyway, wanted to read you that. One thing that Charles and I tried to do many years, for many years during the 70s, was get a listing, an accurate listing of all the things that were available in the valley for resources for people from birth to death. Ah ha! I'd be suspicious if that got clear back there. Okay, thank you. Volunteer. One who renders a service while leaving, while having no legal interest. Now, isn't that fancy? It means you'd go broke doing it if you just do that for a living. Yeah, a couple other things on here. The Mount Si Senior Center, I mentioned that one. The garden club, oh, the food bank. Oh, yes, one of my favorites. I'm a King County food advisor, which means I can get away with having food brought to my house by a couple of sources that I won't reveal. Quiet back there. And we're able to put them in a, in a way that we could take them to the shelter, which is just a block from me. And we just had, as an example, a big pot roast given to me that was way overcooked, and it was going to be thrown out. Well, I brought a gal in, and she helped me. We made 15 roast beef sandwiches on two kinds of homemade bread, with cheese and lettuce from the garden, the whole nine yards, and took it over. So they were getting a fresh roast beef sandwich, which they hadn't had in a while. By the way, Robert, did you get one of those? He's either lying, or it went awry. It went awry, I don't know. You didn't get a roast beef sandwich? No, 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 it was within a week of now. He just doesn't remember his diet, that's what. Yes, Robert's special over there. He likes everything that comes in. The, let's see. Snoqualmie Valley Hospital, in Compass, Alpine Children's Center. That's another one that I didn't get to go to college, but I loved Bellevue College, because I used to take evening lessons there. And I saw that the people that came had a babysitting center, and I thought, hmm. So I wasn't the one who thought it up, especially, just co-thought it up, that we started the, it wasn't called Alpine before, it was through Bellevue College, and I was a volunteer there and helped it set up. Same time, Ryan, that's the only daycare I'd send him to, is one where I could be the teacher still. So we did that, and they have been going now, let's see, I shouldn't tell, but Ryan's going to be 60 in a year or two. So that's been going, no, three, three years? Okay. Yeah. Anyway, yeah, she, yeah, that's her. Anyway, so it took off and did really well, and I worked there, I don't remember, three or four days a week, and Ryan got in free. Well, imagine that, didn't have to pay for that one. And it's still going, but our churches handled the beginning of that, the beginning of two or three other services, like the shelter. We were the first to have the shelter three months, the winter months, and we were along with other churches, but as they all fell out, it was left to just us. And that's when Jennifer Kirk and found the space where they have now, and so people can be there nightly, which is big improvement over when we first just got that started. So that's kind of an idea of some of the things that I've done as a volunteer. And what I like to say is, you know, if you think you don't have time, nobody has time anymore. But somehow, Chuck and I managed with, like I said, I had three jobs at one time, and the two kids at home, and just, I like meeting people and what I know that they can do if they'll just give it a try. There's a, let's see, I put that picture up. We didn't find that. Oh, we didn't find it. Okay. If I find it yet tonight, a closing poem that I wrote years ago, I'll read it to you, but we've had a hard time locating it. So what I wanted to do was, whatever time we have left, is, would you like to ask some questions or have some comments? I'd love to hear from some of you. I know most of you here, there's a few I don't.
So if you do have any questions, please come up to the podium, and/or, or any comments, if you volunteered with with her, just go.
I've loaned all my materials to Carson. Oh, thank you, put his hands right on it. I knew you had that. This is called, I get a really dry mouth, so let me perk up a bit here. It says, photography and layout by Carol Peterson. That ain't my strong suit, but I did it. All the time Chuck was mayor, I did before and after pictures. 10 years, nobody else had done that for the historical museum, so they're all over there now. And this is what I wrote to him. "The heart of America is its people, from rural and urban, to each capital and steeple, working and playing, commuting and resting. All together we're one, the whole world is testing. We're together to make our community better. Cooperation and initiative, we build to the letter." That's the sign board. "To remain country but updated is always our goal. And the head was Peterson, the mayor was his role. Many followers and helpers made progress come true, and hopes for thriving and good business anew. Eight years of leadership to the guide, old Snoqualmie. Then the reins passed to another. After 81, don't call me, I was tired. The learning, the friends, the changes that happened. Many folks are responsible and should be well captioned. America historically is rural and striving. Our small-town USA, Snoqualmie is thriving." Thank you.
If anyone would like to make any comments, please come up to the podium and in comments. We need, you need to speak into the mics, so that we can
If I have to.
Record it. Thank you.
I had a heart surgery that was the first success in the world, and I built a living person with that. And with that, I have to tell you, if some of you aren't Christians, I'm sorry, but as a Christian, I, what I live by is Luke 12:48, and it says, "To those who did it much, much as expected." I've lived by that ever since I donated that surgery two months later.
Amen.
And with that, not too many months after that, on a Friday night, my father said, "Well, General Taffet Bank was totally in the morning." And we moved to Bellevue. And I could not, well, I went to Bellevue for three weeks and had to go back home because I was opening a funeral party. Anyway, so I just moved to Bellevue, about six years, and was in the army two years. But other than that, I was almost the native of Snoqualmie. I think, so that's so late, too much so, that I was the third oldest living on Snoqualmie, but recently, yes, passed away, and I don't know who's older than me, but somebody is, I guess.
But I'm considered the, the native of Snoqualmie, regardless of, I wasn't born here, but my husband was born but my husband was born here and died here. So I'm a native, and I feel like a Snoqualmianite. And we used to be very opposed to North Bend. But before my husband left office, he had set up, if you go to North Bend now, you see the elk field, by the way, which he saved from development, that whole shebang. I know Mountain Greenway owns it now, but that came that the signs now say, "Leave me Snoqualmie," and here's North Bend. So Oscar Miller, the mayor of North Bend, of my husband, got along just fine, and they agreed to split it. And it's now not King County. King County was from what we call Mascred's Corner. You know what that is? Nobody remembers Mr. Mascred. Anyway, it's where, it's where the Milk Barn was. That was the farthest we could go. And on the North Bend end is a big turn when you turn out to the highway. But it's all belongs to North Bendites and Snoqualmianites now, that we got King County out of the way. That's the way they described it. We got King County out of the way. So, any other questions, comments? Yes?
If you do, please come up to the mic.
Yes, I forgot that too. Oh.
If you'd like to speak into it.
I don't really, because I was young and they rolled. That's, that's the way I looked at it at the time, because the people we needed were ones that would climb on top of a gazebo or put up ceiling tiles for a whole weekend with nobody knowing you did it. And Otto and Dio Reinig were not that way. They had two of the main stores. So that's, that answers your question.
Councilor Benson, did you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, I had a question for you. Your list of things that you accomplished for this town is ridiculous. I, you know, I'm just imagining doing them all, and that's exhausting. But I can imagine somebody listening to you thinking, well, what's the point of volunteering? I couldn't possibly do all that. What do you say to somebody who hasn't volunteered and is intimidated by, you know, the Mount Rushmore of volunteering and
I never thought of it that
until we're getting out, you know, that my husband and I just over there, way after he was mayor. It's just, when he was first mayor, he made it a dream. We wanted to know what each one had in mind for their life. And we both said Snoqualmie and making it into something we could see and feel. But we did not think of there in 1962, when he was mayor. And we just stuck with that as we did one project after another. And most of, like I say, as we were starting, well, I can't think of any that didn't take. And a little success through the long way. And being a volunteer can be a very half-hour job. And I go, I've always kept, and this is new, I forgot to show you. And he and I tried to get to where there's a notebook of everything that was available to people who were in need, whether it's food, shelter, assistance with criminal case, children, especially young children, you had no daycare or anything like that. And so what we did, we tried to get around to everybody and find out what all was available. And we just could not get it together. And I just found this resource, it came to me in the mail. And Carson, you might know where it came from, I should go. But this is a resource that was 50 years later. Snoqualmie Valley Resources, every organization in the valley that's available for folks now. And I didn't even have this, when I was still on the human resources committee. I heard of many of them, but I didn't know anybody took together this. And I loathed it out, but I thought, give it away, because I'm so pleased. It's like a lifetime report series. It's in a book that somebody put together. You just do a little, Ethan. If you only have a half hour, you don't really need to sit and watch the halftime of a football game. And then get out and go to the floor. And that's, that's
I can do a half hour. I can do a half hour.
And I just always wanted to spend it on people. And what they can either enjoy or lose in their life. And to me, that was enough. Ethan, I have to go on that one. I'm going to do a report now in my chair. A little bit of a dinner party to bring people together, you know, to see someone like people that have been asked for here. And my goal has been to get rid of a longer maybe that people just got. And sometimes I go and say, or they go down the road. And I always have one person at the table who I know is in conversation with, and knows about. And that's my future, this is each time. And so far, I had seven dinner parties with eight people. And I do those work hours, early dinners, and the early hours. And then they get chit chat the whole night away at my table. And there's new decks, so now I'm doing the little splints out on the deck. The chairs and everything. So you all can tell me. Yeah. And that's something I, because I love to cook. I don't eat my food, I cook a lot. And it goes back to the shelter and my dinner. Most of the lawyers don't want me to have that. I only say that because I don't like
We have about five minutes left. Does anyone else want to make a comment, or otherwise we can focus. Go ahead.
I just, I want to be here to say three thank yous to Carol. So, one, I want to say thank you, because I had a friend come from the UK, from the United States College, who was writing a book from the UK about the United States' natural landscape. And she knew, she knew about my friend Carol Peterson's two books that she wrote on herbs. And they're still for sale. Not only is Carol done all these amazing things, she's also, you know, published two books that people would press. It was my friend's book.
Angeline is one of my favorites.
Okay. That is wonderful. And then also, I want to say thank you, I point out, so after Charles passed, well, first, I guess before that. So when my son Will needed a voice-up project, I was so confused. I had very poor organizational skills. And Carol, you helped to come up with the idea of doing that. And I just passed it to you as well, the sign as Snoqualmie Methodist. And, and once Will announced that he was thinking that, next thing I knew, Charles was calling him, because you had told Charles, help this boy. You have helped so many young people learn to volunteer. Yeah, and speaking of which, so I just, and this is so touching to me. It was weeks after Charles had passed, and we were packing up the suits to donate to prison systems, men who were dealing with incarceration. That helped me. That was just an amazing start to just like you said, how can I help somebody else with what I have? And the last thing is just that thank you, that inspiration you have provided after Charles passed. And what an amazing historic merit partnership. And yet you kept growing, you continued. I don't know a couple who's done more than we've done. To you, I'm just, at Snoqualmie Methodist, that Sunday, I just reached out to Charles. I hope that I'm very small.
You know, let me tell you something that you don't know.
Oh, hold on, we want to clap for that.
I'll just talk louder. I it was not that long ago, so I not only did I invent this, giving away all his suits and clothes, and he's a big man. And I finally got in touch with the head of the Washington State prison system and asked him if I could do this. And I selected three kids, teenagers, to come to my house, and I had them first go into closets, which were mainly clothes. Then we laid them all out, and they matched them up in the outfits, with these men that were getting out of prison. And then I had them go to the table, and they all wrote notes. And I had them write, I forgot that, three or four notes each with a scripture on it. Got tucked in the pockets of the jackets and the pants. So when they tried them on, they would know there's something there for them. After that, I said to the head of the penitentiary, I said to him, would you let me know how the whole system sounds? And he did. And he said, two things have happened. We've heard back from several men that got the outfits and got the job on the first try, which was a miracle with their backgrounds. And the second thing was, we started a movement throughout Washington State for people doing the same thing with women's clothing, when the women get out. And so that meant a lot. And I wrote a little note to the three kids. I don't know if they ever got them, but anyway. It wasn't just my idea, obviously, God was in my corner. And the kids I knew were learning a lot, because a couple of men had grown up, they were writing the notes. And I, it's just I wanted to reach in their pockets and get a note, to know that this was meant for them.
Very nice.
I forgot all about that.
Great.
There it is, yeah, I couldn't get you.
Yes. So we're enjoying hearing, hearing all your stories, and I think we'll take the next, we'll adjourn from this meeting, we'll take the next 15 minutes, so we can have snacks and mingle and hear more. And then hopefully you'll stay around until the beginning of the council meeting, and that's, at that time, then we'll actually recognize Carol for 50 years of volunteerism and a lifetime of service recognition award, so. So that'll happen shortly after we start the council meeting at 7:00. So Councilor May, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? As you announced, we are adjourned. Okay, we're going to get ready to get started. So we just completed a lovely reception for Carol Peterson, and now we're going to start our council meeting. So it is starting at 7:01 PM. Let the record show that, oh. Actually, all councilors are currently present, including Councilor Christian online.
Online.
Now moves the first item of our regular agenda is to approve the agenda. Councilor May have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Walton, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Councilor, is there any discussion? Councilor Mayhew?
I just moved that we put proclamations above appointments. I think it'll flow better for our guests.
Seconded. Sorry, my mouth was full.
By Councilor Mayhew, second by Councilor Benson to move proclamation of kindness month following the lifetime recognition of Carol Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Any other changes? Councilor Mayhew?
Move to add under Committee of the Whole, just a brief discussion of the Snoqualmie Parkway State Route jurisdiction transfer.
Seconded.
By, so motion by Councilor Mayhew, and second by who? Councilor Benson to add the Parkway jurisdiction transfer under Committee of the Whole. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed name? Right. So motion passes. Any other changes? Okay, going back to the original motion, all in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed name?
Aye.
Okay. So it's unanimous, and it is approved. So one thing we need to do is go back to say the Pledge of Legions. And Councilor Washington, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So tonight, we are honoring longtime Snoqualmie resident Carol Peterson for over 50 years to this community with a lifetime of service recognition award and key to the city. So.
My stumble was only because I'm at a knee reconstruction, and it wasn't ready yet. Yes.
So we do have a long agenda, so don't, you don't have to feel compelled to stay. But you're also welcome to stay. So moving on, we are going to do the Kindness Month proclamation. So the City of Snoqualmie joins other Snoqualmie Valley cities, communities, and the rest of the county to celebrate World Kindness Day on November 13th and proclaim November is the kindness month in Snoqualmie. Whereas the City of Snoqualmie honors those, no matter how young or old, that make a positive difference in our community and our world. And whereas the Empower Youth Networks Youth Suicide Prevention Program, which includes the Be Kind SV Snoqualmie Valley Campaign, makes our schools, communities, and states stronger by facilitating meaningful change through simple acts of kindness. And whereas any day, week, or month is a good time to remind all of us of the need to remember that compassion, empathy, humility, and respect are essential ingredients in creation and maintenance of a kind and civilized society. And whereas kindness is a fundamental part of the human condition, which bridges the divides of race, religion, politics, and gender. And whereas by knowing, understanding, and using our power of kindness, we have the ability to send out a positive ripple that may travel throughout the Snoqualmie Valley and beyond. And whereas by fostering acts of kindness within our community, we help our citizens develop a thoughtful foundation and perspective within themselves and those around them. And whereas these simple acts of kindness, we can promote healthy behaviors and positive dynamics within our community. And whereas we seek to cultivate caring, kindness, and compassion with our community, therefore, I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of Snoqualmie, do here proclaim November 2023 as kindness month. And we have, joining us today is the Laura Smith, Executive Director of Empower Youth Network, is with us this evening. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you all for your continued support of Kindness Month. You may remember, this is a COVID side effect. We decided we needed a different kind of pandemic in 2020, so we decided on a kindness pandemic to initiate. I brought each of you a copy of the Kindness Month movie flyer. We are showing the movie Wonder, free to the public on November 4th. And for everyone else, I'll put a few on the table. We'd love to have you and your families come out and join us that day. And then later, we'd also love to see you go to the Encompass Gala, because it's that evening. Um we'd love to have you and your families come out and join us that day. And then later, we'd also love to see you go to the Encompass Gala because it's that evening. Um additionally, I wanted to announce that Empower Youth Network is in the final running for a forty thousand dollar B E C U grant. And this is one of the ones where you need to go and vote. So if you could find us on Facebook and watch for those invitations to vote and then um share it and let people know, it's one vote per email. And this is a great way to bring an additional forty thousand dollars into our community to support our youth and our families. And lastly, I brought each of you a copy of the book Together: The Healing Power of Human Connection in a Sometimes Lonely World. This year at our annual Key Leader Summit, we focused on the loneliness epidemic that's been identified by our Surgeon General of the United States of America. And we did a deeper dive really into how we can connect purposefully with one another throughout our community. So I really wanted to bring this to share it with you all here. And encourage you to save Monday, August twelfth, from nine to noon for the Key Leader Summit this year in twenty twenty-four. Again, thank you for your continued commitment to the citizens of Snoqualmie and thank you for your commitment to kindness. We appreciate you all. Thank you.
We'll clap again. Because it's kind. We'll clap again because that's kind.
Yeah, it's a kind thing to do. I know we're jumping the gun on the month, but yeah.
We will only be kind in November.
November only.
Next items, A B twenty-three dot one one, city administrator appointment. So I'm excited to appoint Mike Chambliss to the position of city administrator and I'm asking for council's confirmation. Mike was hired as Parks and Public Works Director in twenty twenty-two. During this time, Mike's accomplishments included development, capital improvement plan during the first city, project management of major projects, organizational restructure of the Parks and Public Works Department, and employee development. Mike agreed to be the interim city administrator in May. Mike's proven leadership skills are evident for the past six months. Several examples include his working with human services and recruiting, personal matters and labor relations, financial management, including budget and oversight, managing I T improvements, ERP implementation, and project management on the community sitter. Excuse me, and model train projects. One second. So as city administrator, Mike will oversee all aspects of city operations and work closely with elected officials, city departments, and city residents. Before joining the city, Mike had over nineteen years of municipal leadership experience in various roles, including director of resource management services, code enforcement, and law enforcement. So I appointed Mike Chambliss to be the city administrator to carry on our goal of increasing efficiencies in delivering high-quality levels of service to our residents and businesses. Our staff has focused on implementing citywide improvements to updated internal processes and systems, which can be challenging, given that some staff members worked with the same leadership systems and processes for nearly two decades. These improvements are altering the long wait standing way that the city has traditionally conducted businesses, business. So the city is in the midst of significant system upgrades that will improve internal efficiencies such as the municipal ERP system, which is a financial system. So the conversion make it easier to budget rather than using the multiple Excel worksheets that we use. We have updated our financial policies and are currently updating personnel policies with neither had been fully updated for at least a decade. We're improving communication practices, increasing transparency. We're developing new resources, performance management, and employee development. And we're working with the unions on new contracts and working to reduce mandatory overtime for first responders. These are a few examples of citywide improvements that we are working on. We have a responsibility to our residents and businesses to deliver high-quality services as well as fiduciary responsibility to implement more efficient systems to reduce costs. Mike Chambliss is the person that will help us lead this effort. So council, may I have a motion to confirm Michael Chambliss, the city administrator, approving the employment agreement and authorizing the mayor to sign?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilor Benson and Councilor Walton. Is there any discussion? Councilor Benson.
I think that Mike should be immediately given the option to publicly say no to this. Alright, so by all means chime in anytime. I my my biggest concern is that Mike is ridiculously good at his job and I and he and he does a bunch of other jobs on top of it. I'm my my prayer is that there will be systems put in place that will not allow him to work twenty-five hours a day. That's all I want to say.
Second.
Councilor Mayhew.
Yeah, I I just want to say um, you know, over the past week or so, Mayor, I appreciate, I know you've reached out to all the council members to help us understand this choice. And I think um of all the choices, uh of all the people out there, I think Mr. Chambliss is uniquely positioned to to step in and help us right now. And so thank you for reaching out to each of us and helping us understand your perspective on this. And I I also um just couldn't be happier with the selection. I I do think, and you just alluded to this, Mayor, in your comments. I do think that there's uh a lot going on and there's a lot for Mr. Chambliss to take us through. I'm fairly concerned uh about the number of department director positions, all but one of them are vacant or have interims. Many senior staff positions are now vacant. So a lot for Mr. Chambliss to take on. Um and so um I really would like to hear not necessarily tonight, but soon, how the council can help. And I know we've talked about, to some extent, compensation at different levels may be a factor. Very tight budget. Inflation has crushed us because taxes don't go up when inflation does, but costs sure do. So anyway, it's a lot. It's a big challenge. And I wish you the best. I uh I support you, Mr. Chambliss, as uh this position, but I do think we need to hear a lot more about how we're going to get this done. It's a heck of a job and there's um there's a lot to be concerned about and you certainly have your work cut out for us. So we'll just pause for a minute. As Councilmember Benson said, your last chance to say no, otherwise we're behind you and quarterback us through it.
He he's the one, but we we have talked about work-life balance. Councilor Walton.
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo that that sentiment. I I think Mr. Chambliss has done an exceptional job since the time he's arrived here. And I had the privilege of of being um included in the interviews of of the candidates that came through National Search Firm. At the end of it, it was like comparing them with Mr. Chambliss's um um skill set was a hard challenge for them to 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 match. And uh I I concur that he is very capable of doing this position. I also understand too, he's put a lot of time in and it's a concern is making sure um that um he's supported by department heads and I think that he will bring a lot of um stability that we need. And uh I I think he is a very good counselor for um the staff. And I'm looking forward to incredible next couple of years. And uh I I think that the public should be, you know, take very good note that uh this is an exceptional um selection. And I'm thrilled that he's here in the community and we already know his work ethics, which um are outstanding. Uh we just don't want you to burn out either. So greatly appreciate you stepping up. Thank you.
Councilor Benson.
I I also want to say, if you find yourself to be overwhelmed, there is a very prolific volunteer who just retired. You might be able to pull out of retirement to lend you a hand.
Who's had past experience helping a mayor?
It has to be a solvable.
Forget it, forget it, forget it, forget it, forget it.
Councilor Washington.
Yeah, I just um I would echo the same same comments as the council here. I got a chance to meet um Mr. Chambliss, Director Chambliss, uh when I was on the E D C. And um you know, morning, night, he would take my phone call and always help counsel me through any concern I had and always timely feedback. I've watched you work as the interim administrator with great diligence and good character. So I don't know that there's anyone more qualified for the position than you are. Happy to have you on board.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Um yeah, and as we said before, I, one of the open positions is a city administrator and uh I do want to stress, we, the council, are part of the solution moving forward. Rob uh left the mayor in a difficult position when we said no to all the other candidates. But Mike has done an excellent job as acting mayor and I think it's a proper thing to move forward with with his affirmation in the position. We've got uh at least two of the positions coming up first part of next month, which is not that far off, folks. Don't forget to vote. Um and uh so that is coming in and it's good to have administrator who's got some history already with coming in the position will help those new candidates uh come on board and start to be productive right away. Okay? And that's about it. I had it all write up and I'm not going to do it because you've all you guys have said most.
I I will say it's interim or city administrator, interim city minister is what he's been doing, not acting mayor. Councilor Johnson.
Sorry, if I said acting mayor, I didn't mean to.
In my head, I heard. Yeah, for the um, yeah, for the the last um, you know, what, year and a half or however long it's been approximately. It's just been a real pleasure uh working with uh with Mr. Chambliss on Parks and Public Works. And uh some of the things we had going on over there were projects that are long overdue and they would routinely come in on time and either on budget or under budget. He has a stellar track record uh over in Parks and Public Works. Uh so uh you'll you'll be missed there, but uh uh hopefully you won't be a stranger to Parks and Public Works.
No, be a stranger to Parks and Public Works. Just gonna do one job, one.
Councilor Vincent? Any other comments? Councilor Christensen.
Yeah, sorry, apologies. I'm having some uh difficulties with some unstable internet at the moment, but I did just want to say that I think the Director Shambles would be a a great fit for the position. He's been fantastic. And then my my feedback uh would echo that of my fellow council members. He's been great and I look forward to seeing the additional processes or, excuse me, open positions be filled. So thank you so much.
Right. Any other comments or discussion? And then all in favor, say aye.
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 Bye.
And any opposed name? It says unanimous and Mike Thomas is now our new city administrator. And would you like to say a few words? Mr. Chambliss, I think Dina Clerk, Dina is going to do the oath of office and then you can say word for word, please. Thank you.
Got to make you official.
Raise your right hand, please. I say your name.
I, Michael Chambliss.
Having been duly appointed to the Office of City Administrator of the city of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Having duly been duly appointed to the Office of City Administrator of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially.
Do solemn solemnly swear that I will impatient.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability.
Form the duties of my office as prescribed by law to the best of my ability and the
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and of the United States of America.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um thank you, Mayor Ross. Thank you, council members, for the support you show me. It's my pleasure and truly my honor to serve the citizens of Snoqualmie. I'm one of the old-fashioned type people who actually believe the civil service is a honorable profession and I got to work every day trying to make things better. My family and I live in the Upper Valley and um we appreciate this special place and we also really appreciate this community and thank you for allowing us to become members of it. As I take over the Office of City Administrator, I will always put the citizens' needs first. As Mayor Ross has presented, we are currently currently in a time of global change or there's a global phenomenon. It's also affected us here locally. Over the next few weeks, we'll begin to fill several executive positions that have been vacated. We'll begin with the two public safety chiefs with the goal of having permanent chiefs selected maybe in place by the beginning of the year. Other executive positions will follow in early twenty twenty-four. The city of Snoqualmie team is changing to meet today's needs. It's exciting to work with this team of professionals to implement these changes. We know there's a tremendous amount of work ahead of us and my team and I look forward to delivering results for this community. And don't worry, I've been threatened with physical harm by multiple people. If I show up at Public Works in the morning, it's six AM. So I will do one job. Thank you.
Right. At this time, we will provide time for residents to provide comments for items not on the agenda. So first, a few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have the right to have their elected representatives perform in order of early and efficient manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three. in order of early and efficient manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and city residents for the record. Director comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor, or staff or to engage in debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to all your concerns. So with that, would anyone like to speak to any concern that is not on the agenda tonight? If so, please raise your hand in council chambers and also online. Seeing one in council chambers, raise their hands. Or anyone online. Right. Next item is the consent agenda. It contains approve the city council meeting minutes stated October 9th, 2023. Approve the claims approval report dated October 23rd, 2023. AB 23-125 Amendment to the Agreement for Legal Services with Ogden Murphy Wallace. AB 23-127 Adoption of the ADA Transition Plan. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Murpham Holloway and Second Councilor Washington. Is there any public comment regarding these items, any item that is on the consent agenda? If so, it'd be limited to two minutes. Please raise your hand. Let's see anyone in City Hall, raise your hand. Nor anyone on the online. No, I'm trying to get it released. Okay, let's move on. Councilors, is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those favorites, the aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Any, nay, it's unanimous and consent agenda is passed. Next, our committee reports. Is there a report for public safety committee?
No report.
Any report for community development committee?
No report.
Right. Next is a community center presentation from Parks and Public Works Committee, committee. Interim Parks and Public Works Director Jeff Hamlin, would you please lead the discussion?
Okay, right. Hello, everybody. This slide says, and I'm Jeff Hamlin. I am your city engineer and interim director of Parks and Public Works and also the project manager for this project. And I'm going to give a presentation today to give you an update on the status of this project. And kind of give you a snapshot of where we're at and what we have yet to do. I'm not alone tonight. Joining me are members of the design build team. So over here with Abshire Construction, we have Blaine Wolf and Kurt Jimmstad. We have Josh Sutton from the YMCA. And we have Doug Weiser from Parametrics. And these guys are going to help me out if I get stuck up here. So, next slide. Like all good presentations, gotta start with a hook. And in this case, the talking. So this slideshow was prepared by our architect, ALSC Architects and within tandem with Abshire Construction. And this shows what you're going to see here is our preferred configuration and what we call our ultimate configuration. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later, but this is essentially what the base bid, this is the our preferred option. And of course, it is also our most expensive, but it's a simple, beautiful building. We think that it's uses economic, cost-efficient design. It's a very attractive space, includes outdoor spaces that function with interior spaces. It ability into the pool and from the pool provides a lot of active space inside and programmable space. And it is better connected to the community with our with the with the entrances, we have multiple entrances to the building. So we're currently in schematic design right now. So what you're looking at is schematic of the not necessarily the final design. But it is kind of a grand vision that we wanted to present to you, which captures the, the, the function functionality of the building as we see it and as we think will best serve the community. Let's go with it. Okay, so this slide here is presented just to demonstrate how many times we've brought this before yous, all of the public meetings that we've had and a little bit of our community outreach activities, which have gone into this next slide. So in a project like this, any public facility includes multiple phases of design and it kind of starts with this planning programming effort. And then it moves on to a schematic design, which is where we're now, which I'll get to later. And then that moves into design development. So we have finished up the programmatic, the programmatic design or the programming, program phase. And the, the, the purpose of the programming phase is really to define what we want the building to be. You know, what's it, we start with design principles and this was a result of the community process that we did. We actually had two of these community center advisory committee sessions. Actually, that goes clear back to 2019. We actually had three, but the pandemic happened and that kind of fizzled a little bit. So when we got back to it, we had two, two more public meetings or I guess advisory committee sessions. And we identified several design principles, which are demonstrated here. So we wanted the building to be a magnetic hub. Sort of in a the center that was visible and attractive to our community. We wanted it to be uniquely Snoqualmie to showcase the, the region and the community. We wanted inclusive design so that it would be accessible by all citizens. We wanted to maximize flexibility for, you know, efficient use and programmable space. We wanted, we had stewardship, so responsible management of the funds and facilities for the families. And then a high performing facility, which is integrated, sustainable and holistic design. So we took those, our, our, our team took those basic design principles. And we advanced that to identified our, our facility functions. We wanted to discuss activities, sizes, the number of visitors, the number of facility memberships that could be attracted to this building. And the way and developing these kind of this programmatic function based on the size of the community, the demographics. They know about what size and what sort of activities to include in a facility like this. And Josh Sutton over here is from the YMCA was very helpful in helping us identify all of those and, and developing the sizes. So the ultimate configuration, which you're seeing here is essentially our our ultimate configuration from the schematic design phase. So like I said, we are about halfway through, well, maybe about halfway through our schematic design phase. What we're trying to do here is start with the ideal facility and then back that off in costs, because the ideal, the ideal configuration is going to be the most expensive. Knowing that we may not be able to hit that target, we're looking at options to try to reduce costs, but still provide for the maximum amount of flexibility. And I'm going to walk you through those things today. But let's start talking, let's talk about the base bid first. So the base bid, it includes a six lane, a six lane lap pool. The sixth lane is kind of important because it provides for competitions. It can have swim team meets there where a smaller pool would not allow that kind of activity. That is attraction for certain users. It has a recreational pool with a current channel. I know what sometimes we call lazy river. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. It has recreational pool that has, the recreation pool is good for therapeutic activities and recreation, which are popular with senior health rehabilitation usage. Has zero, zero entry for accessibility and that's good, you know, for use for obvious and seniors and those with disabilities. It has programmable area for swim lessons and water aerobics and space for other programs to ensure financial viability for the pool. That is actually one of the, the major sources of revenue for a pool is to have those kinds of programmable space. Has a fairly decent locker room complex. We should note that this building is also an emergency shelter. So these, this this locker room complex can be used for shower space and more room for existing wife shower programs and unhoused community members. And then it has, you know, ancillary mechanical rooms, storage and pool office spaces. Has an upgraded lobby. You'll notice this in the center, which is very much of an upgrade, which provides views into the pool and it kind of will function as a little bit of a community living room. It's centrally located between the pool and the fitness areas and it will be kind of the center of activity for people coming or leaving the building. It has a community room for functions and events and gathering space for residents of all ages and health and wellness classes, et cetera, with integrated outdoor patio space, which is, you know, provides a good place for, for teens to hang out and seniors to gather. And it's a much needed feature for our community. Has an updated kid zone, which is the improvement on, on what we have there currently. It has administrative offices for, for staff. Two new dry studios in addition to for the, to the fitness area. And some reconfiguration of the existing building. So overall, this thing, this, this building configuration, it maximizes the needed programmable space for all ages, youths, teens and seniors for flexible use of space. Next slide. So this exterior view, it, it shows the accessible path coming from Ridge and Center Street. So you can kind of see a crosswalk a little bit there. That's Ridge Street up front, of course. And then we've this configuration includes an accessible path. So this building will have an entrance to the community, the, the Ridge Street, Center Street. And a better access for the business area promotes economic vitality. Next. The pool. All right. So the base bid pool, of course, we talked about it, six lane lap pool. It's got the rec pool, lazy river, zero entry and all that programmable space. The design team visited several pools in the process of this. And the idea was that we want to go out and, and look at different pool facilities, see what would work for us. Try to determine, you know, get a, get a sense of the value of certain features and get some lessons learned. Because each of those features, there was things that the people who ran them things where they thought they could improve improvements on. So we did, we learned some lessons and, you know, things, materials and the such to be used in the, in the pool design and the building design. Pools are a corrosive environment, so it's important to get the HVAC system designed correctly and to choose the correct materials, placement of lighting. Turns out you don't want to put a light directly over the pool. Atter the pool. Yeah, did use of proper windows and placement of lighting, using the windows actual, you know, this a lot of windows which provides natural light. So that reduces the, you know, amount of electricity uses and amount of lighting needs. And then, like I said, choice of pool deck material and pool basin materials. Next slide. So our ultimate configuration, this is, this is the pool layout. So we talked about the building here, we're going to focus on the pool because the majority of our options for cost cutting revolve around the pool because the pool is the biggest expense. So as you can see, the base bid cost is $26.9 million. And like I said, this is a schematic design. So the, the cost here represents a schematic level of schematic level of design, meaning that certain assumptions are made in determining the, the design. As we move forward into design development, once we move past schematic design and get into the, the details, there are probably areas where we can cut costs. So we think that the ultimate cost for any one of these options would be slightly, a slightly less than what we're demonstrating here. I note that our cost here says 26,866,481 dollars. That probably demonstrates a little bit more precision than we should show because we are in schematic design and, you know, maybe we should round it up to near a thousand. But either way, the cost that I'm going to give you are generalized costs based on schematic design. So next slide. So here's pool option one. This is, this represents a half a million. This removes the current channel. It reduces the size of the rec pool. It reduces the deck space. It reduce one of the structural bays of the building. And those few changes will reduce the cost by the building by approximately half a million dollars. Next, next slide. Pool A, pool option two. So this is our minimalist configuration. This is the least expensive. This gets rid of the rec pool altogether and we have one single pool. The advantages here, of course, the building shrinks considerably, can remove about three bays of the, of the structure. And also it removes a lot of equipment. Since there's only one pool, there's only need for one set of pool equipment. And it would also, there would be also additional shrinkage to the mechanical rooms, probably some of the, the storage space, the locker rooms, all of those things would shrink concurrently. But we haven't really shown those here because that's kind of a level of cost and then now beyond where we're at. But we, we know that we can cut about $2.7 million off the base bid by just using the simple configuration. Now, that's not all perfect. We still remount at pool, which is we can use for, for swim team competitions. But it also has a problem, well, not a problem, I shouldn't say it's a problem, but it's an issue where the people who swim laps, they like the water to be a little bit cooler because, you know, they're working hard and they're, they're exercising. People in a rec pool tend to like the water a little bit warmer because they're not working as hard. This pool would have us right in the middle. So the lap swimmers might think it's a little hot and the rec people who are using it for recreational swim team lessons and the like might find it a little bit cold. But, you know, there's a, there's a balance that has to be made with that sort of compromise. Next slide. Pool option three. This reduces the lap pool down to four lanes. And it reduces the rec pool, removes the easy, the current channel, lazy river. So we remove some of the functionality of the two. This does not allow for swim team competitions. However, it could still be used for, you know, lap swims and I believe their swim teams could still practice in a, in a pool like this. It removes single, one of the single base, structural base, reduces the pool deck to some degree and, and it will skinny up the building. And that would give us, you know, a reduction in cost of 1.1 million dollars under the base bid. And then option four. We've started calling this from the nuclear option because that's what just bombs the pool. that's what just bombs the pool. Alright, so this is a single lane, or I mean a single pool configuration that we had an option to, but still six lanes. It reduces the building size, reduces the locker rooms and ancillary features, removes the administrative offices. It removes the fitness area expansion. It retains existing building, the existing building will stay as it is now. So no or very, very few changes to the existing building. And that's to save cost. Problem with this one, of course, is that this does not quite, this does not quite meet the YMCA's financial model. This one is not going to generate revenue like the other pool configurations would, or the, the other expanded facility would. And so it would likely lead to kind of a renegotiation of our operating agreement. Excellent. So here's table. This has all of the, the pool options together. And what we've done here essentially bracketed the highest to lowest, right? So, you know, the base bid being the most expensive at about 27 million dollars. The least cost option is about 21.8 million dollars. And the, the other options in between. So next slide. So funding plan. I gotta, I want to talk a little bit before I dive into these numbers. I want to talk a little bit about what we're trying to do here. We have essentially two parallel tracks. We've been working on the design of the pool. And we've also been working on the fun. What we want to do, we have to get to a guaranteed maximum price. Our schedule has us getting there by 24. Guaranteed maximum price is kind of essential for the design build process. It gives us some surety that we'll stay within our design prior per parameters. Right now, our design track is out ahead of the funding track. And eventually they're going to converge. But where they converge, they decide what option we go with. And so I guess a couple of things to, to note here is that we have time. We don't have a lot of time to make a decision, but we have time. And we will need to get to that decision before we can develop that guaranteed maximum price. If we delay this project, there are cost implications. If, well, for instance, the energy code, the energy code, there's going to be some updates to the energy code. Right now that's scheduled for March 2024. That will, those, those changes alone will probably result in an additional cost to the building of about 250 to 300,000 dollars. It's not a huge jump, but it's also, it will force us to use some different, perhaps innovative technologies, which are not quite standard with how most pools are, are, are run, or most buildings are run. It's going to gasp, for instance, they're not going to allow gas anymore. There's going to be additional insulation and I think windows, window treatments, some things are going to change and it's just going to add cost. We don't know for certain that that's going to take place in March, but it, you know, that's when it's scheduled to happen. It's already delayed six months. It may get delayed again. The building industry is fighting it and will probably fight for another delay, but there's no assurance that that's going to happen. So after March, we can assume that we're going to have higher costs due to the energy code updates. Of course, there's also inflation. So the longer we wait every month, you know, we're currently sitting, I think around 4% inflation. So that's going to continue. And then there's cost estimates, our cost estimates that we show here are based on, you know, excavation in the dry, meaning if we stay on schedule, the majority of the earthwork happens this coming, the summer of 2024. If we delay, then we're constructing in the wet and that's a more difficult environment to construct in and that's going to add cost. So if we wait a year to get back to the dry, then we're fighting escalation with inflation. So delays are going to have cost impacts, but that's, you know, if, if we don't have the funding, then I don't know if we have much choice. But that's not all doom and gloom. There's some, there's some good news. So let's start, let's talk about these numbers for a little bit. Right now we have 15.4 million dollars. Essentially that's in the bank. That's, we got that assigned to this project. So we have 15.4. We have a King, a grant from King County, an aquatics grant for a million dollars, which we were awarded a couple of months ago. The YMCA has pledged 2.2 million dollars, a million dollars in fundraising and another 1.2 in commerce grants, which were, we're, we think we have a high likelihood of getting.
Sorry, just to be clear.
Concern may you?
They pledged that dollar amount regardless, or they've said they'll go after that.
They'll go after that.
Okay. So they didn't pledge 2.2.
Well, I don't know if it's a pledge. I guess I wouldn't, I guess I can't use the word pledge.
So this is a commitment from the YMCA to provide 2.2 million.
We're still discussing it, but that's the
So is that a commitment to provide 2.2 million? I, I'm hearing no, I'm hearing there's no commitment.
I guess I'm not, I, I can't say whether it is a commitment or not.
Okay.
Mayor Paul Tim Hallway.
So, and just because of prior comment, is that number liable to change depending on the options selected to move forward? Such as if we only get the, you know, the lowest option and it doesn't fit the Y model for how they want to run this, does that commitment on funding change?
Do you, do you maybe, maybe we should grab him? We need to fix that.
It's those battery mics.
It's the battery mics. So just to provide some context as to what the, the source of the number is. In 2019, when the city and the YMCA were previously on the pool, the YMCA a company to do a feasibility study on fundraising in the community to support this project. And we were told that they believed we could raise a billion dollars in the community to support a, a pool and an expansion of the YMCA. In addition to that, $1 million to be raised locally on the YMCA of Greater Seattle and YMCA's across the state are eligible for the youth recreational fund, which is out of the Department of Commerce and the capital projects in the state of Washington. And we have been successful in securing that funding for every major expansion that includes a pool across the state and in, and especially in King County. So we feel comfortable that the, the 2.2 number is a, a number that we can start from. Your question is to if the project changed dramatically, would that change what we can bring to the table? It might change what we can fundraise locally. But we don't know that yet until we get out into the process of, of doing that work. So the, I, I wasn't trying to be evasive in my answer earlier, but we have not committed to a specific number yet, but that is our targeted number that we are working with. My bosses and I have met with Mayor Ross a couple of times to discuss this and we understand our timing that we need to make that commitment well before the end of the year so that the council knows what you're working with as you're making a decision about the project going forward. Is that helpful?
Cause we may you.
So just to be clear, you'll deliver that money by this summer of 24 groundbreaking that we've just been hearing about. You'll deliver the 2.2.
No, sir.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Well, let me explain why. We're going to be fundraising for the project up until the time that the project opens. So we will, we will have to talk about the timing of that. Secondly, the timing for the youth recreational facilities grant, the 1.2 million is that the state will open the process in May of 2024. And the, the projects will be recommended in September of 2024. And then they will go to the state capital budget and when the state capital budget is signed in spring of 2025, then we would enter into a contract negotiation that takes a month and a half or so. And then we would be eligible to bill for the full 1.2 million dollars. And so that timing has been made available as well to the mayor and the staff.
Follow up.
Okay.
So then if we were thinking about timing of that 2.2, there's a fundraising campaign you'd have to run for the one million that you mentioned.
Correct.
There's a grant process that you just outlined. This would be something that certainly would be, probably sounds like either winter of 25, 26, or some, you know, in time for a spring of 26. That that's the sort of timing we're really talking about having that 2.2 million available.
The state grant for 1.2 million would be approved in late spring of 2025. As we all know, the ever
Spring, okay.
Spring of 2025, after, when the capital budget is signed.
Yes.
And as we know, those capital years, they usually take until the end of April and then they get them signed usually in May. And, and so in summer of 2025, we would be able to sec, we'd be able to actually bill for that money, show our expenses and be able to transfer that money. Simultaneously from the time that the project is approved, whatever the project is, the Y is already beginning to lay the groundwork for a fundraising campaign, but we would then go into that fundraising campaign. And we would continue to secure gifts. Some people make their largest pledges by making that payment over five years. And so I think the YMCA and the city would need to negotiate both what our commitment is to the project overall, and then also what our payout is. So you have certainty as to when that would come along. The other thing that I would say is that in addition to the 2.2 million that's listed here, that the YMCA would be contributing directly to the project, we're also holding probably about a half million in fixtures, furnishings and equipment, FFNE. Blaine really likes that part of my budget. He must throw it over the fence towards my side. And so that's, that's not shown on this sheet yet, but we're also tracking that at the same time. So probably 2.7ish or so is really what we're talking about. That, that the Y is going to try to bring to the table for this project.
Right. But that additional amount wouldn't go against the numbers.
Correct.
That we've been discussing, that would be the fitting, you know, the kitting out, if you will, of, of the building.
Right, right. When, when we open the doors, we, we want to have chairs and stuff like.
Yeah, yeah. And so that's above and beyond just the building.
That's exactly, that's not, and that's why I'm saying you're not seeing the 500,000 ish or so is my rough guess. You're not seeing that on this sheet. Because that's, that's being thrown over the wall to the Y separately.
Got it. So timing 25 and maybe with some of those gifts coming in over a time period.
That's exactly right. Yes, sir.
Cause we want.
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for Director Hamlin. I'm going to put you on the spot. Well, interim director Hamlin then. So our delta that we're looking at is somewhere in the neighborhood of seven to 10 million is kind of the gap. If we take and assume that, well, if the YMCA thing doesn't work out, we'll put it back, you know, and, and we have to fill that in. So really we're talking about seven to 10 million, correct? On, on the other funding. And then the second question, just because if we go to bond or whatever, however, we decide to, to do this and it goes to Councilmember May Hughes point and, and that is really construction is not going to start until summer or fall of 2025, possibly, you know, spring of 2026. We need to kind of factor in inflation. How does that all work? That we approved in August, I guess that's the question.
Well, currently the, the current schedule has a starting construction in the summer of 2024. So next summer.
That's, that'd be a little premature though, and having all the
We don't have all the fun. It is, yeah. So yeah, it would have to wait until we can, you know, we're sure that we can build what it is that we decided to build.
Follow up question to that then.
Just cause rotten.
How much flexibility do we have in the design build? Because the whole idea behind that was we just want to guarantee price so that we don't have things that suddenly pop up that we weren't expecting. And now we've got a half million dollar, million dollar shortfall. We're trying to figure out, you know, what are we not going to do at that point?
Yeah. So that's the point of the guaranteed maximum price. So that we do enough work during the schematic phase so that we can, so that the contractor can assure us that what it, what we have selected and what they are designing, they can build it for that number. Right? Like I said, those, that number will likely be a little bit, a little bit less than what we're showing up here because these represent a lot of design assumptions.
Rep. Tim Hallway.
So in prior review of this, there was a fire truck somewhere in here. It didn't exit stage left or where is it?
Well, we can talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and, and do you want to start there? Because it's on the list. So eliminating CIP projects. There are, oh, it's on the list and, and I was going to work down that list. So I, I'll say let's get to the CIP as we move, work through the, the list.
Okay. So you've taken it off, at least the funding at this stage.
Well, you were
For a further discussion.
You were, you were correct in that delaying a project and taking that money is essentially just robbing the CIP because it doesn't replace it with money on the backside. Right? So we've essentially eliminated anything that just delays CIP. So we can grab the money this, in this, in this buying. Yeah.
Rep. Tim Hallway.
Okay. So piece, that's one discussion. Another discussion of taking ladder truck and taking the funds allocated for ladder truck and moving it over here. And eliminating the ladder truck altogether. That's not delaying a project. That's eliminating a public safety device to fund this. Is that no longer under consideration or is that still under consideration?
I believe it is still under consideration, but we are not ready to talk about it tonight.
But you, it's not in your 19 million dollar.
No, 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 no. We will bring that forward. We need to do some work on that and demonstrate to council that that's actually a good move for us and that it is, could actually be done. I am not familiar with all of the commitments that were made with
I just wonder
Yeah. So we're working on that. We, we can present some CIP elimination options. But we're going to work on those numbers. And that's why I said, you know, there's hope. But I can't commit to any of these things right now. And that's why the design track is out ahead of the funding track because we have several decisions to make on the funding track so that we can, you know, essentially land the plane on a moving deck. So moving up, sorry.
I think the ladder truck's going to be addressed at the next public safety committee to talk through that. Cause I may.
Yeah. So I just want to ask you a few questions, but I, I want to make sure I'm not too, are there other slides or were you just going to spend some time on the right side of this slide and then?
Going to spend some time on the right side of this slide and then we're done.
Have them talk through it, do you think?
I think
That he had.
That might be counterproductive at this stage. And so I just wanted, Mayor, maybe I could ask a question and if you guys want to put me off, then that, that's fine, but maybe I could ask a question? Yeah. So I've been involved in this particular round, if you will, of thinking about doing a expanded community center and pool since this project started, which is about five years ago. I know, because I remember the first meeting where we talked about it and I remember many of the meetings as we started to really develop this and think about it. The whole genesis of that whole discussion was that for some reason we named it REIT and sales tax. You're pointing to the source it came from, but the point is it's fund balance. You said that in your presentation. That's money we have. I think you use the term in the bank. That's correct. At that point, that number was still only about 10 or 11. So it's grown. Had a few more years of REIT COVID and not, anyway, it doesn't matter how it got there. There it is. At all points in these discussions that I was involved in, the idea was that we would shoot for something that probably was out of the reach of just the city. that probably was out of the reach of just the city. And that we do that intentionally. Because if we were going to build a pool, the thought was, by God, build a pool that meets the needs. So when we think about our kids and we think about them all the time, and so call me everything we do, right? Parks, anything we do, because we have so dang many of them. The city of Snoqualmie is half of the kids in the Snoqualmie Valley School District. Half of them are our kids. Meaning our kids, they're all our kids, but our Snoqualmie kids. So the point is. They're especially. So so the point was, we wanted to build a facility that would meet the needs of the school district, especially the high school swim team. Okay, yet we're only half the kids. So it's a reasonable notion that a significant part of the cost of meeting the needs of our school kids. And by the way, it's not just the swim team. It's teaching our young kids how to swim. Right? Especially since we've got this river that we all live right next to, which tragically claims lives every year. So desperate to have them know how to swim. So all kinds of issues there. This was always an idea where we thought, in order to do this, let's shoot for something that's big and it's probably therefore going to be outside of our reach alone. So let's try and get, let's shoot for something that makes sense. And then let's get the funding from those folks that are also going to benefit and who reasonably would say, you know what? You guys are making a good pitch. Fine, we'll find a way to play. Right? So district, that means going to the county. And that's great. We've got a million dollars of grant, but you look at the aquatics levy and you look at the total amount of money that's out there, there's a lot more that we can go after than one million. Okay, we got to make a good pitch. And one of the questions that gets asked is, well, wait a minute, if there's another pool just down the road that meets the need, that gets confusing, that has to be understood. Okay, we got to work through that complexity. We got to see what happens. Is there going to be another pool down? Okay. But then you've got a whole list up there, State of Washington, going straight to the state, asking for our legislators to help find funding. There's been a lot of discussion about the fact that we ended up getting a a direct appropriation, an appropriation, not a grant, an appropriation from the state to help us with the parkway in recognition of the fact that most of the wear and tear on the parkway was in fact happening from non Snoqualmie use. Okay, so similar, this is a pool that's not just going to be open. I caught when you were making your presentation, you said, when you were talking about the ADA apportion, you said something, you know, something would be used for all the citizens. Not just all the citizens, all the residents, first off of Snoqualmie, citizen or not. And even more importantly, this is going to be open to people beyond the city, right? In fact, I believe the Y's assumptions are on a a membership base that definitely comes from more than just the city. Great. So King County funds, State of Washington funds, Snoqualmie School District funds. The idea was always to design something and then go get the money. And that's something that the eight elected up here have to do. Yes, our staff, you can do some of that. You can apply for grants. The Y can help us applying for grants. By the way, what, what are we going to do? You know, is there going to be a tribal? Minute on this. Might the tribe be interested in investing in this? There's always discussion that we thought perhaps they would. Didn't have those discussions, so we don't know. But the idea was first design the right project. Now, maybe as you went through, I think you gave us one, two, three, four options. Maybe we pick an option and say, you know what? If school district doesn't want to kick in, then maybe we need to go back to a an option that's one of those smaller options because it would no longer be used for that. I don't think that's the path. But in any event, the idea was design the thing we think we should build. Figure out the cost, figure out what we've got, and then go get the rest. So all I want to say is when I look up at here, I look at nineteen and I look at your list over on the right, I think there's a few more funding sources we should put in there. But you've got that. You said other question mark. See, you you've acknowledged that. I think what we should do from a process perspective, I'm really pleased tonight. You've brought us the options. I think as a council, we need to decide on the options. Therefore, the price tag. This isn't happening in twenty four. We don't have the money. We can dance around that all we want. It's not happening in twenty four. Okay, so let's get the numbers. If we can't get a design build commitment, which I always thought we wouldn't because I didn't think the timing would work, whatever, let's get what we can. And then let's put an inflation factor on there as best we can. And then let's go get the money in a timeframe that's going to work. So that's kind of my pitch. And so I think getting too balled up in cut this particular CIP project in twenty twenty four or that particular in twenty twenty four, I think is sort of not really worth spending our time on. I think let's, I I will say, just to close out my comments, so I would just say on this, rather than getting into that minutia, I think we need to pick the project we need and then figure out big picture. How the heck are we going to go get that funding? I got news for us. It's not going to happen by cutting one or two CIP projects. There's just not enough money there. So I think that's kind of a waste of time to focus on. Let's focus on how we're going to go get the money, which to my knowledge has always been the concept. That's work, guys. That's work we have to do. Each of you ask yourself, how many millions did you get from those sources and help bring into the city? By the way, no one of us is going to do that on our own, but that's what, that's our job. Yes, staff has a role. Go apply for grants. Yes, how many grants have we applied for so far? So that, then the only thing I just want to say as far as deciding which of those projects you showed, which which are the size projects? The only difficulty I had in trying to pick, I mean, I had a definite reaction that I definitely had definite thought of what I thought was the right answer. But then I sort of challenged myself and my thought was, why, Mayhew? Why? Why is that your choice? And I feel like I don't know how to answer that question because I believe it should be based on a set of criteria. We want to add X thousand square feet of I I saw two additions and I think you mentioned that they were for I can't remember the term, work workouts, fitness. So we need X thousand more square feet of fitness. I know that many of the things that a a full, a full community center does, we can't do. I don't go in there and see senior classes. I don't go in and see bridge classes. I don't see knitting classes. Now, I I don't, I don't mean to be, I literally don't know some of the things that happen in in these centers, but I didn't hear about how much more. So we need X thousand more square feet. So we've studied this. You made some references to, hey, the Y has some experience. They've helped, helped us try and focus in on this. That's running a Y. We're a community center, which is, okay, Ys are kind of community centers. Anyway, I'd like to know kind of what are our, we need this many, so I have sort of a list of these were our goals. And then when you show us those of those options, I see, can see, okay, so we're not going to hit this goal if we take this option. We're not going to hit these two or we're going to. So show us a measure against what goal. And I think that we're going to have to speak to those goals anyway when we go pitch this thing to those other sources of funding. But that's my thought is, let's do a little more getting everyone on board on what the project is and why it is, because we need this much more programming space of this type, of that type and so on. Let's pick the project as a council. Great process. Now let's go get the funding. And yeah, if somewhere in there, we end up needing to look at some CIP projects, let's do that. My gut tells me that's way down the line.
Councilor Walton, you're.
I, the one thing that I keep coming back to, and that is the question, why six lanes and not eight lanes? Is there some science behind it? Because once the concrete is poured, you're never going to have the opportunity to add two more lanes, and that makes me nervous. Is there some science going back to Councilmember Mayhew, why we're doing six and not eight? Because I see a lot of other pools having, having kids and taking them different places, Snohomish, Covington, of Federal Way. And when we talk about competition, is that going to leave us out of some of the competitions that happen if we don't have a large enough pool? Because that is certainly going to help drive business on Center Boulevard.
You guys both bring up really good points there. Okay, sorry. Mike, did you want to jump in on that? Okay.
Yeah, believe it or not, I used to be competitive somewhere. Six lines is standard for high school competition. Really never got into additional lanes until we got to district finals. And we're not building a facility for district finals. Occasionally, that means you have two heats of fifty free because you got sixteen kids swimming. You got to run two heats. But it's just the way meets flow, et cetera. We would not be missing any opportunities by doing a six lane pool. Doing a four lane pool, you definitely would because you don't have six lanes. So you really aren't competing at that point.
Okay.
And the additional size of the building, the additional water and and all that would add a lot of money to the cost.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel better.
Councilor Benson and Councilor Johnson?
Um, first of all, thank you, Absher. What a great presentation, really clear and and easy to understand. And thank you to the presentation by the Y on the two point two million. That was really helpful and also really well explained. I just want to say I I really appreciate, on the right hand side of the screen, that it is worded eliminate CIP projects. When we were talking about it earlier in last week, the idea was more about postponing, but I think it's really important. And Councilman Holloway made the point that the, if we take something out of the CIP, it's gone, it's gone. We don't, we don't have the money anymore. We put it into the, into the community center. And if we decide later that we want those projects to happen, then we're back to the drawing board on, on collecting the funds for those things. So I appreciate that that was reworded in the way that it was because I think it reflects an important reality and also heightens the expense of removing a CIP project in order to fund the community center. So thank you for that clarity.
Councilor Johnson?
Uh, thank you. I wanted to second everything the Councilmember Mayhew said. Also, there, there are two things I wanted to to mention here. First was, I just wanted a little bit of clarity because I didn't actually hear the ask unless it just went past me. I thought that the ask from Parks and Public Works for tonight was that we pick one of those five, that we cannot continue moving forward with those five options, but we had to pick one tonight. Maybe I misheard that back at Parks and Public Works, but I thought that's where we were.
Let me answer that. So, yeah, we're, no, at this point, this is the whole point of this is a status update on where we're at with the project. And to identify, you know, kind of where we're standing now. And the important point, what do we need to do if we want to move forward with this project, which is now what we're talking about? Right? Obviously, it's the funding component. The funding component is what needs to be sorted out before we can really move forward now with design.
Okay, so I had some sort of misunderstanding. It's okay for you folks to keep working with these five, some variation. We're just not at that point now where that choice needs to be made. Okay. The other key thing was just, there was one CIP item that was on that list of Parks and Public Works that based on the description of what it was for, still made sense to me. And it was a healthy chunk of money. It was a couple million dollars that was to support a particular lot where there's some there, there is a proposed development that could happen and has not been actually, uh, no applications have come into the city for it. But it's an idea that's out there and that that particular project was to stabilize that particular location.
It was Sandy Cove Phase Two for the upper bank.
And to me, if that's just to help out one property, then like, yeah, that's two million dollars. That sounds awesome. If that's something that we have in the bank that only supports one lot, then this sounds more important to me than that. And and two million dollars is is a lot.
I think that, yeah, if for CIP items, we choose that we wish to consider elimination, we can bring that forward to Parks and Public Works.
Right.
And talk it out with you guys before we air it out with the full committee. Or council, right?
So how about if I mentioned, there's a couple of things. So you talked about fundraising. I mean, so far it's been writing grants or, you know, we've had conversations with our legislatures and then talking to our county. And so there will be a school board meeting on Thursday. So I've already presented to them twice. And they are going to have the pool conversation. So, you know, I don't I would recommend reaching out to members and and talking with them about the importance of the pool because I know they they would like their swim team to be able to swim somewhere, but also children be able to learn to swim. So I don't know if they will make a decision at that point, but there could be potential investment there. Also, we'd be happy to draft a letter to legislatures and have you guys sign it. So they'll have some pool money or some I say pool, but you know, potentially some money this year. It's not going to be millions, but they would also have it in twenty twenty five, and they always like to be the last dollar in. So if they can focus on that and and find it between the the three legislatures, you know, that that would be helpful. And then there's also just different companies in our area that would like to invest most likely and also talk in the tribes. So I think there's lots of options there that especially if you want to approach companies, contact me, we can do this together. And and also the Y, because the Y would be helping fundraise. And so anyway, there's lots of options. It'd be great if people step, council stepped up and started helping with that. Council Johnson?
Yeah, I had two other questions about it here. And may- maybe this is something that when you talk about Parks and Public Works, so you could just stop me if that's where that belongs. But I am curious why, wh- what's the need for the, I forgot what I'm supposed to call it, lazy river, for lack of a better term.
The current channel.
Current channel, yes. What's the purpose of that? Why do we need that? But on top of that, I also wanted to just share my personal view with the council. It's hard for me to see this being a community center expansion if it doesn't have the waiting pool for our seniors and our small children. If it's just a tank for people to do lap swimming, I don't think that serves the needs of our community. Some significant savings there. One other point on it, though, is that the current channel, okay, if I'm saying that right? Having that versus not having it also isn't the largest chunk of change on this list. So if there is some sort of good for it, then great. Also, you know, half a million versus, you know, something else. But anyway, so those are were my thoughts on that.
If you've gone to this mamish, have you seen this mamish pool?
I have not.
So they actually have the current, they have the laser over there with the current channel and you see elderly's or seniors using that. And so they actually, it's kind of their exercise and there's actually benches in certain areas so they can sit down if they're tired in the water. But but it allows for, you know, kind of rigorous exercise for.
It takes the weight off of them, right? So because the buoyancy, so they're not having to support their full weight, but they can walk against the channel. Sometimes they'll take a noodle. Right? But they get some exercise that way for folks who are either rehabilitating or, you know, unable to do vigorous exercise.
You're going to be old someday, Joe.
Oh, no. But there's also the the other pool that doesn't have the the current. And I'm wondering what the significant difference is between those two things. That's, that's what I'm wondering. And if that's Parks Public Works, I'm fine to just talk about it there instead of here.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, so two things. First off, I one hundred percent agree with Councilmember Johnson, and I would just say it this way. I have some thoughts, and I think I alluded to this earlier. I had reactions to your presentation. But then I challenged myself and I said, actually, it doesn't matter what Mayhew thinks. It matters what we're trying to achieve. And our measure should be, how well are we achieving what we're trying to achieve? And perhaps, do we actually believe we should be trying to achieve that? You know, is someone saying, I'm not, is someone saying, ah, the heck with the old people? They don't need any water. Okay. Tell us that and tell us what you're, no, Johnson didn't say that either. But if someone's saying that, okay, let's hear that and let's hear the evidence behind that. I I certainly am skeptical, but I'll, okay, I'll listen. I I certainly am skeptical, but I'll, okay, I'll listen. Let's look. But the point is our criteria. What is our criteria? It's something I say all the time to my kids as they think about what they're trying to do is I say. If you don't know where you're going, every road looks fine. Right, Dad? So where are we trying to go? I I'm just not clear on that yet, and I don't want to substitute Mayhew's idea of what looks cool for what actually meets the needs of our neighborhood. So I that was missing for me, but I think once I have that, then I think I'm going to get right in on the kind of things that that Johnson was talking about. Okay, then why that? Why? Okay, oh, that's why that. Okay, got it. So that's number one point I wanted to make. So my own view is for me to make, to give any input on which of those choices. I need that information. What were we trying to achieve? And why did we, how did these pick? You you started out with a slide that sort of said, here was our design criteria. And I was so hoping that it was actually going to tell me, and then we decide, you know, there's going to be a slide behind it that would tell me that it wasn't there. I bet you guys weren't making stuff up. I bet you got all that. Of course you do. So please, you gotta, for me anyway, you need to share that with us. Help us get, certainly help me get to where I can say, okay, now I know which one of those pick and I know why. Okay, that's that. And then the second thing I wanted to say is, Mayor. Anything you want a council member at regard to the pool, I'll be there. Just tell me where to be and when I'll be there, and I challenge all of us. I challenge all of you to do the same. This is a team sport. This is a big thing that we're talking about here. Big. And we've got to be in play. The mayor cannot do this on her own. Staff cannot do this on their own. What is this? Find the funding. So I'll be there, Mayor. Anytime.
Acting Mayor, too.
So I can propose, so we have this information, of course, because we went through the whole programming effort. We have a programming report. I can provide that. And what these options demonstrate is reduction of cost, but also reduction reduction in function, right? So we can define that by option, right? So here's the full, the ultimate configuration. It has all of these functions in it. That was by the programming effort. It was defined in the programming effort. For every option, there is a corresponding reduction in function. So we can definitely put that together for you. So to demonstrate that.
But I think a lot of the criteria came from the focus group, right?
That is right. And, you know, you did bring up a really good point, which was the main concern of the focus group was that we would build it too small. Right? They were worried that we would make such a compromise that we would not build an adequate sized facility. So you were right about that. It's if we make too many compromises, we may end up developing something which is not either desirable or as functional as it could be.
Quick, quick follow me. Just for the record. For the record, it was Watten that was worried about the size of the pool. Although, let me be clear, I a hundred percent agree with him. Pretty sure others do too. But for the record, don't want to take his credit. That was Watten's comment. And yeah, bring us that criteria. Here's what we defined. Therefore, here's, and then here's what the reductions would be. Just make sure you give us that front end of, you know, here's what we took from that and here's how we defined. What needed to be added. And then just last thing I meant to say in my earlier comment, I just wanted to mention. There's another city just over the past that's been was working on funding for a pool. They went after their state legislators for three million. And they, it took them three years. They were, you know, they just kept going at it. But they picked a number, they had a basis for it, and they kept going to their state legislators, trying to get it into the state budget. So these, this can be done, but it can't be done in three or six months. It's a lead time. And generally, tho- those kind of things generally go into a state budget. They get thrown out, they go into the next one and they get through. Now, that's simplified. Doesn't always work like that, but that's the kind of idea we need to be thinking about. So it is a three year kind of concept. It's not a six month concept.
So does anyone volunteer to write a state letter to the legislators or do you want us to write it and you sign it?
Anything to do with pool, Mayor, you say when I'll be there.
I'll I'll sign Jim's letter.
Happy to, Mayor, just let's follow up.
I think your staff were to draft it. We, the council would consider it.
I would just say, let's not ask staff to do politics. That's us. They're good at writing grants. This is a pitch to legislators. That's guys, we're the ones that know. I mean, we, they can help us. But but don't put it all off on them. They need our help. And yes, Mayor, what? Just tell me when and what.
Let's talk after this meeting tonight. Council Johnson?
Yeah, I think that my my concern is that we would be at this stage saying, dear legislators. Can we please have some assistance with our community center expansion? And we don't have a specific ask. Are we asking for half a million? Asking for a million. Those are two very different things. And if our legislators have no idea what the order of magnitude is that we're talking about. Then I I I don't see how they would be interested in having a follow up conversation. So I feel like we need to have something that we're asking, and that's what I'm worried about at this stage.
We can provide that number.
Okay, that'd be very helpful.
Council Benson?
Have we in this design and I I looked at needs of the broader county? Have we looked at things like, you know, like there's not enough, you know, old people pushing lake rivers? In pools, have we looked at that? And, you know, is there, is there a way to leverage that? Something that that the county really specifically needs that is underserved? That our community center could address. That might give us more of an angle for talking to our legislators about getting us more funding. Have we, have we maximized the those kinds of things in the design of our facility?
I don't believe we've actually taken that angle at it, but I kind of like where you're going with that.
It seems like if we're, if we're, if we're going to ask the broader county to.
I think our Josh Sutton, maybe you can use.
And and in the in the the design, not the competition side of the pool, the lap pool. But in the other side, does it, does it do the best job of that? And are there other things other than that 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 space could also address? That that are high needs that are that are underserved in the county?
The rec pool in in all of its configurations is designed to provide the maximums. Or at least the max, the minimum necessary space to provide swim lessons. And I was, yeah, Mike actually could answer this question better than I.
Number one priority was surface area water to teach kids to swim. And that doesn't just occur at the rec pool. It also occurs in the six line pool. Number two priority would be a place for the school to swim at home. Number three, provide a recreation experience for the community. I mean, those were our our top three guided principles, but our number one priority was a place for everyone to swim. And I think I said more than once to you guys was if we ever have to say there's no room. For a kid to come into the pool, we lost.
Well, I I would, can I just follow, follow up? I I would, I would say that if there's anything else that we can add to that, if we can say this is going to be an excellent space for. Water aerobics for the elderly, the elderly, that kind, that that kind of thing. If there, if there are those kinds of things that are underserved in the community. And we can list off the the kinds of programs that we're planning on doing. That will directly impact those groups. If we can list four or five different, you know, really underserved things that we can do with this facility. It's going to help Jim write his letter that we volunteered him to write.
It'll be in his email in the morning.
Okay, alright.
So Council Watten?
I'm, I I love the emotion of the pool, but then I have to put on my banker hat and say, okay. How much does this really cost us is whether you're a homeowner or renter. We pool all of our money together. It's about twenty five hundred dollars. To fill this gap that we're talking about, about twenty five hundred. Be thrown about thirty five hundred households. Just put things in perspective. That's what we need to to fill the gap with. And we can do it many different ways. It doesn't have to come out of property taxes alone. So just keep that in mind.
Council Mayhew?
Yeah, so just a couple of quick thoughts, just side comment, although folks in the Y would be way, could could go into much more detail. Probably another time when they have time to go into detail, but it turns out that. Generally, you get a really nice matchup when you're trying to teach kids to swim. Because of the time of day that you want to bring them into the pool and then the other users who might want to use the pool at that time of day. You you end up kind of being able to slot them in and at a time that has low demand on the pool. So it turns out this is, it's just a wonderfully complimentary kind of thing to to pursue. The the thing I'd say is, you know. If looking at what population we serve, when you look at the Snoqualmy, the Upper Snoqualmy Valley. We're less, Snoqualmy's less than half the population of the Upper Snoqualmy Valley. And if you throw in Fall City, why? Because they're in the school district area. We're definitely less than half the population. We're we're half the school kids, but we're less than half the population. So for whatever it's worth, serving a bit. Now, I I don't know the details of exactly what area the Y is thinking they'll, they'll be able to draw from. But I'm, I am aware that it's substantially more than just the city. So that becomes very relevant to, as as Councilmember Benson was suggesting, very relevant to the state legislators. To the county legislative, uh, council. So I I look, I'll just tell you. I I talked to, if you count the three state legislators for our district. And then the county council member, I talked to one of the four of those. I I talked to all four of them at least once every four months. And in every conversation for quite some time now, that always includes a discussion, where are you guys at with the pool? Okay, so this is, they're aware, but their questions are, have you guys settled on a pool yet? And the answer so far from me has been, no, we haven't settled on a pool yet. And they say, have you got the other funding lined up that you need? And I said, well, no, we haven't even picked the pool yet. So I think whoever made the comment earlier were actually premature to write the letter. But having said that, not exactly. There's a reason I'm talking about it with them all the time. Because these things take time, right? It's like, I could do the thing with the kids about laying the table and put the tablecloth on and then you put that, right? So you gotta lay the table on this. And so this is, this is something that takes time. So we all need to be at work now, just, I mean, when the mayor tells us she's already been in front of the school district and so on. By the way. There is a current candidate for school district that has said. They will never support a single dollar of school of money going for a pool inside the city of Snoqualmy. Now, I'm not going to say who it is, but geez, I bet I just surprised you. I bet some of you don't even know that's true. We have, we're not doing the full court press on this and we've got to start doing it. So write the letter now, even though we're not ready to send it. So we know what has to get filled into that letter so it's ready to go. I think, I think we're right on. Let's start writing it now. Let's start figuring out where we need to go. When we were making the pitch for the parkway, we said, you know what? We're going to have to present facts on who's using the parkways. Not good enough to go and say, well, we think there's a lot of trucks that go through. So we paid for a study, the city of Snoqualmy paid for a study. And they do things. They they put people at either end of the parkway and they time the trucks and they look at license plates. I don't understand how it all works. But they establish exactly the percentage of trucks that are stopping in the city or not. And so then we had the facts to go to the legislators with. That's very persuasive. So let's figure out what facts we need for the letter. Let's write the, and then, you know, let's, it's going to take time. But now, it's it's now and it's more than, it's a lot. So that we've got, okay, I made my point.
So any other comments? Otherwise, this is a good overview. Thank you. And we will then the criteria and we can start writing letters and thinking about the fundraising. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited. Finance Administration, is there any report?
No further report.
And customer regional liaison updates. We have any updates? Council Mayhew?
So if I could just focus everyone for a minute, I on the K four C meeting, I went to the K four C meeting this week. Fantastic meeting. It's, it's amazing to be back in live in person meetings on these regional governments. I walked in the room and I, I can't, I spent the first fifteen minutes where my genius plan was to get a cup of coffee and find a place to sit. Just re, re talking to so many council members from other cities. And talking, just reacquainting, but also finding out a little bit, hey, what what's going on with you guys? Okay, it was also almost all about climate issues, but it was fascinating. And it's all the things that we all get when we participate in regional governments. You learn, oh, wait a minute, Lake Forest Park is doing what? What? Wait a minute, maybe that would make sense for us. This is fantastic stuff. So again, I just really encourage all of you, us, to be involved with regional government. The specific things I wanted to tell you, we had a fantastic presentation from Michael Fertz, I think is the right name. It's the Department of Washington State Department of Commerce Energy Division Director. And of of just a fantastic overview of all the programs going on. And then we also got a great update from State Representative Beth Dogley. About kind of who's the Chair of the House Environment and Energy Committee about all the bills that are expected to come forward in this coming session. But here's the thing I wanted to bring to your attention in particular. I'm going to send you an email. Which is a summary of the Washington State Department of Commerce items that were presented to us. On the last page, on page six of that, is an item called electrical, electric vehicle charging equipment. They're going to give out a hundred and twenty four million dollars. For charging equipment at multifamily housing, schools and other locations. They're going to open an initial funding round of sixty four million dollars. These are grants that we can apply for to build, to put in EV charging equipment. I don't know about you guys, but those Teslas keep, I I keep getting almost hit by them. They're so quiet. They're all over our community, these EVs. So sixty four million to support. Level two or DC fast charging grants in residential multifamily public spaces. Fleet Depot and Workplace Charging, Workplace Charging, including. City, how about the parking lot right outside City Hall? Okay, so I'd, I really hope, I just want to bring this to administration's attention. I hope that we take a shot at some of that money. I hope the council supports that, but it's really worth your time to look through this. There's a lot of good stuff in here. This isn't pie in the sky stuff. This is stuff we can get right here in our community. That's my report, Mayor.
Council Christian?
Yeah, the SCA in the same vein in terms of being active in regional appointments and whatnot. Is doing an online Q and A session for the twenty twenty four SCA Board and Community Call for nominations. The call is going to be October thirtieth from noon to one. They'll have folks that are available to ask, if you need to answer questions, I can throw the link if anyone's interested. Also, there's an SCA networking dinner coming up on Wednesday, the twenty fifth, so this week at five thirty to eight thirty. Excuse me, five thirty to eight in Renton. And it is, the speaker is calling BS, the art of skepticism in a data driven world. If you want any of the information or links, let me know.
Thank you. Any other regional updates? Okay, so also part as part of the community of the whole, community of the whole, was the Parkway. of the whole, community of the whole, was the Parkway jurisdictional route transfer. And so actually tomorrow, Jeff Hamlin and myself are meeting with the Senior Policy Analyst of the Washington State Transportation Commission to kind of further find out what, maybe further clarification on the decision and what are the potential next steps? So we could bring more information back in mid-November when we meet. So what is your question, Cusper Mayhew?
Yeah, Ma- Mayor, fantastic. Wonderful to hear that. I think when, so we've repaved the Parkway. Good. That gets heavy, heavy use. And again, if any of you haven't read the study that we had commissioned, I referred to a little while ago, you should read it because I, I'm going to get this wrong, but I'm not much wrong. A single fully loaded eighteen wheeler going over road is the equivalent of some insane amount of cars.
Eight thousand.
Eighty thousand cars is the same as one truck. So here's the deal, that Parkway's going to get used up. Let's use that word, used up. And it's not 20 years, guys. Not with those trucks running around. It's soon. So here's the deal. If that, so the current status is we had a one-time state appropriation. We cannot afford to, our, the, let me say it differently. The burden on our residents is far too great for them to carry the cost of that Parkway. It's not reasonable. It's certainly not fair. So we have to get to something where the state takes on their, and why the state? Because the state collects taxes from those trucks. They pay taxes to use the roads. They pay a heck of a lot of taxes to use the roads. Okay? That, those taxes flow to the state, not the city. Okay? They don't refuel in the city. They don't, there's no, we don't collect taxes from those guys. So that's why the state, there are taxes being paid. It should be paid for these roads if they're going to use the roads. Now, if we're, if the users of the road, if there isn't a mechanism for them to pay for the road, then I think we have a duty to ask should they be using the road? That's not a question for the truckers. They're paying their taxes. So I'm just troubled that we're having some difficulty having this responsibility, which clearly is a state responsibility, getting this shifted to the state. So I just wanted to bring this up and say that I think this is not something that we're passive on, that we have a role in this to say, wait a minute. You know, there's an expectation by us if those vehicles are going to use that road. So I just think we should back the mayor on this. I, I would like to just refer, I believe it's to Parks and Public Works, but I'd like to refer to committee to just have further discussion about what should be the city's approach to working with the state and trying to work something out that's fair. So I guess I'll make, I'll, I'll make a motion to refer this topic for further discussion to Parks and Public Works Committee.
Second.
So it's been moved by customer Mayhew, saying my Cusper Johnson to refer the I guess just the Parkway, it's not the jurisdictional transfer, just the Parkway conversation.
Okay.
Right. To Parks and Public Works. Any discussion? Cusper Benson?
Yeah, 202 is a state highway.
Correct.
So, so the trucks could use that instead and make their way to to a freeway, right?
Through our downtown.
Yeah.
Cusper Mayhew?
What she said, yeah. So we've got a single lane road to our downtown, which especially through downtown has extensive, massive pedestrian use that we actually want to increase for the vitality of our downtown. But also heck, for all the P, the folks that live in that part of our town. You know, that, that road is not as far offset from houses as the Parkway is. So yeah, that, wouldn't that be an ugly outcome, right? But you know, we've got to get a fair outcome. The state has, in my view, the state has to carry the burden of roads that are primarily state roads, and that is a connector road from eighteen to 202.
Cusper Benson?
And as a person who lives a block from 202, that would be very annoying. But it doesn't change the economic reality that we're, we're not going to have the five million to redo this in ten, twelve years. We're not going to have it. So.
Or sooner.
Be great if we could come to a different outcome.
Cusper Johnson?
Just wondering if, if no is no, then what?
It was deferred. They did not cancel our application.
No, I know, but two years is a long time for us to wait. And I, I am worried that if we wait two years and do nothing with regard to planning for the future, and then it comes back now, then we're two years behind on coming up with a solution.
Right.
Two years.
Right, so that could be more discussion at Parks and Public Works.
Yeah.
Cusper Mayhew?
Hundred percent agree, but if I could just make the point, it's about what we do over the next two years to make sure that the wrong outcome doesn't happen. Right? It's not about allow that bad outcome to happen in two years. It's like, we gotta, we know right now, we gotta get to work. So we gotta get to work. We gotta make sure that bad outcome doesn't happen, right? The
You put a PS in that pool letter.
I, I'm on a roll tonight about the kids, but I'll just do one more, which is, you know, when the kids were told, you know, make sure you get home by curfew. And I remember a question that went something like, or what? And my answer was, it's not or what? Get home by, by, by curfew, right? It's not about the or what? It's about, let's get home by curfew. Let's get this done by two years from now. That's what it's about.
Anything else?
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, everyone in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? So it's unanimous and we'll move back to Parks and Public Works. Need added on the agenda. Alright. So Mayor's report, I'll just give a quick update and then we do have an executive session that we'll need to get into, so. See, so council, be sure that you review the council draft of 2024 legislative priorities and provide your input to City Clerk Dean by the end of this week, so she can compile those. Some of these we already talked about. I had the opportunity to visit Legion Technical Glass Products. We hailed a manufacturing day for all the local students from the high school. So it's actually the welding program. And I got to speak to the group on the importance of having commercial businesses, businesses such as manufacturing in our city. And it had the honor of meeting local students who will be graduating over the next several years. The manufacturing day allowed them to tour the facility and learn about what type of positions are available at this company. And they also had opportunity to meet other Montsa High School graduates who are working there. So, and some of them had been promoted, so they had a panel and discussion later. So it was very exciting for them. I also attended Space Labs on hall for their employees, or probably easily over seventy-five employees attending. The top questions were about state rod eighteen, because a lot of them commute in. And so, and also the completion dates. And then as well as transit options across state rod eighteen. So we will continue to work on that. Hiring is also an issue for many of these companies. And I've, with Space Labs, I have set up a connection with them and the CTE program at the high school so that they can potentially train students for other certain types of jobs at the school. So then that, that is, yeah, we already talked about the other topics already. So any other liaison committee reports? Okay, so seeing none. So the next item is executive session, actually to be closed session in pursuit to RCW4230.1404B for the planning or adoption of a strategy or position to be taken during the course of any collective bargaining proceedings. Or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings for, for approximately, how long do you think? Thirty? Thirty minutes. So those attending will be our, our city, the City Attorney, Sophia Maybe, a Summit Law Group, and City Administrator, Mike Chambliss. So and our police chief, interim police chief, Ryan Lynch. Okay. So we will take a five-minute recess and convene at nine oh five. Then we'd be done at nine thirty-five. Cusper Mayhew, you have a question?
Do we expect to come back into this general session?
Nope, that's the next comment. So no, no action is anticipated following conclusion. Please leave the cake there. No action will be taken anticipating, following the conclusion of the closed session, the council will then adjourn directly from the closed session and not return to open session. The city clerk will be informed of the concluding time for the executive session, closed session, excuse me, which will be reflected in the meeting minutes. So we will take a five-minute break and come back at nine oh five and complete our executive session by nine thirty-five. Thank you.